Flights allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold it off, please.
Claudia.
Here.
Tracy Allen.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Alan.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
John.
Here.
Barbara.
Here.
Al.
Here.
I'm sorry. New Jersey Open Public Meeting called in act two showed the right of the public to have advanced notice filed into the meetings of public bodies on which any business affected or interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regaining to be publicized by having the gate town in place narrow sent to record the liquid news and town news newspapers, constituents, borough clerks, and borough libraries, as well as closing the school district's practice ways and the board office. According to the New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere with new brands, including but not limited to the parking lot, curassy area, and athletic fields, violating public study to define that to the state under that.
Claudia will read the mission statement of the Riverdale reopening plan.
Mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide safe, student-centered environment in which the student can value and expect it, to challenge students to each place or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to grow a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all the students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards.
Thank you, Claudia. We have public comments on agenda items only at this point. Because I do see we have some people here, we will open it up for some comments after the presentation of the Riverdale reopening plan by our superintendent. But right now, any public comments on anything on the agenda? No? Okay, well, I'm going to hand it over to Patrick. He has the Riverdale reopening plan.
So, thank you. Welcome to the audience, large audience we've had in months. Thank you for coming and taking part of your time. As you all may be aware, we have the students represented from RBTV here. We're filming. This is also being broadcast on our YouTube channel live. Before I begin that, I want to take this opportunity to welcome Trudy Engel, who is our new business official board secretary. Trudy started with us effective July 1st. I hope that will be a long and fruitful relationship, and the impact that she's had in just the first 26 days has been remarkable. So, welcome, Trudy. So, I'm sure the audience is here about reopening. I think that's a fair assumption. I put out copies of this that I'm going to talk about, so you'll have it in front of you. There's also some frequently asked questions. If you don't have a copy of it, Mr. Pepe and Mrs. Correa are over there. They can make copies for you, or they were making copies for you. There you go. So, we were way to go, Chip, and Tiffany. Thank you. So, just to begin, I'm not going to go over it extensively, but I do have an introduction to the Board of Education about the impact of COVID during the prior school year. These are just numbers. Obviously, there's more that goes with it because there was a lot of suffering that took place in our community regarding this, not only on a personal level, if you had, if you or someone in your family was a victim of the disease, but there were also economic repercussions, et cetera, et cetera. So, please, don't do anything other than take this as just a general number aspect of the first, of the impact of COVID. But we had 101 confirmed positive cases in the school district, and over the course of the year, 781 of our students and staff members were put into quarantine. We had six different times that the two buildings were closed in total, and the district then participated in three global vaccination administrations, which were geared towards adults. And by the end of June, we had 83% of our staff was fully vaccinated. Now, we're going to turn to the 2021-22 school year. School opens for staff on September 1st. It opens for students on September 2nd. September 2nd and 3rd are half-days, and then we have the Rashana closing and Labor Day linked together. So, we begin full-time instruction, I think it's September 8th. That could be off one day, but I think September 2nd. No, no, thank you. I was off a day. The difference between last year and this year, as we go towards reopening, is obviously the knowledge that we've gained over the last school year and the information that came from the Department of Education. This has been up on our website for a couple of weeks now, called "The Road Forward", and that's a document that the Department of Health and the Department of Education put forward on guidance for school districts moving forward. However, I think the most significant aspect of that document is that it clearly says that the conditions in which you reopen will be at the city level and at the local level. At this point, there does not appear to be any guidance that's coming from the state regarding a specific course of action, but nonetheless, that could come down in the future. So, with that in mind, the district and my administrative team had to go through several different pieces of information, obviously, from the CDC, from the Department of Health, from the Department of Education, the reopening plan, as I mentioned before, and then we're also being impacted by the fact that the district is eligible for what they call "ART" money, which is the American Rescue Plan, which was money that coming from the federal government. And the way that that document was written, which is also up on our website, is it's kind of behind the times because it's written globally for the United States, and it comes at the discretion of saying, "You were not open as a school at all during the school year." So, a lot of that language is written as if you were never opened before. So, if you look at that reopening plan, you can see that it's basically the same thing that we were doing during most of the school year. Having said all of that, and all that information is up on our website, which we've reorganized, and there's one section, one click, click on it, coronavirus information, and it's there for the main page, the high school page, and the middle school page. So, here are my recommendations to the board regarding vaccinations. There's no vaccination requirement by either the state or Riverdale school districts. As you all know from the news, and between when I got up this morning and turned on the Today Show and before I came over here and was watching Channel 2 News, there were a whole bunch of different public and non-public in New York City making all kinds of recommendations. So, these are our recommendations coming forward now. If they change, they'll be changed because of either our local conditions or we get a directive from the state. However, we must understand that there are different quarantine requirements depending on your vaccination status. As I mentioned before, 83% of our staff is vaccinated, and we do have prelocations in the community that are going forward. So, there's no requirement for vaccination. However, we are encouraging it. We are collecting the information. I've collected it for our staff. We're collecting it for our students. And if there's any comment about that, that's not a violation of any federal law or any other type of law because school districts are permitted to gather information for the public. We have vaccination status of regular childhood diseases too, so, and we keep all the information in a secure location. The only people have access to the administration and the school nurse. That's it. Building protocols. There's no mask mandate at this time. However, that could be, that could change. There could be some directive from the state or federal level at some point. However, individuals aren't permitted to wear a mask if they wish to. They may wear a mask in school all day long. They may wear a mask outside all day long, but they're not required to do it regardless of their vaccination status. We're not going to be having that COVID questionnaire that we have every morning, and we're not going to have temperature checks every morning. However, we will keep the kiosks available in case you come in and somebody wants to check their temperature. We'll be there because we're not going to throw out the equipment that we've already purchased and have here available. However, I encourage everyone, if you are not feeling well, regardless of it's COVID, stay home because the flu can be just as damaging to somebody as anything else. And we must understand that social distancing will be a myth in school. There's over 1,000 students in this building, and there's over 660 in the middle school. Thank you very much. In the middle school. So, if we put kids in the classroom, social distancing will not be in place. However, what we will try to do is organize the classrooms such that people are not breathing on each other, so to speak, in case there are people who are sick. There, as I mentioned, there are two different quarantine levels for people who are vaccinated versus unvaccinated. Unvaccinated staff, students must, or for those who have, and those who exhibit COVID-like symptoms, have to complete a 10-day quarantine. If you are fully vaccinated, which is defined as 14 days after a dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson or after your second dose of McDermott or Pfizer at this point, you are also required to stay home. However, you can come back quickly if you have a negative test. That's the trigger point at that point. If you're fully vaccinated, you have symptoms or COVID-like symptoms, and you get a negative test, you can return immediately. However, if you are a vaccinated person and you test positive, you must quarantine for 10 days. So, you can see what the subtle difference is between vaccinated and non-vaccinated. If you are, if you test positive and you're unvaccinated, you have a 10-day quarantine. If you have symptoms and you're fully vaccinated, you can return if you have a negative test. If that test is positive, you have to quarantine. Everybody see the difference, the subtle difference that I'm talking about that exists here? That's subtle difference, but an important difference between the vaccinated status and those who are not. But in close contacts of individuals who are symptomatic or who do test positive. A close contact is defined as someone who was within six feet of a positive individual for a total of 15 minutes over a 24-hour period of time. If you are vaccinated, you are exempt from quarantine procedures. If you are unvaccinated and someone near you tests positive, as we've done in the past, then you have to go into quarantine for 10 days, but it can be shortened based upon a negative test after seven days. It's laid out in there, and I'm throwing all that information out there, but I want to try to point out the subtle differences. There was a whole issue regarding travel last year, and if you had quarantine or not, there is no travel restriction in place at this point. Again, that could be reinstated, but there are recommendations for people who travel who are vaccinated versus those who are unvaccinated, and that's from the CDC. The only thing that is absolutely required regarding masking is if you're on a school bus, whether it's an athletic event, a school event, you're supposed to be masked, wear a mask. It's just like if you were getting on a New Jersey Transit bus or getting on the train. Anybody who's on public transportation is supposed to wear a mask. So, the students who take the bus in the morning and in the afternoon, they have to wear a mask. The students, the athletes that go on a bus trip back and forth to a game, they're supposed to wear a mask. What I then did, or what we then did to my team, is we developed a set of frequently asked questions. That's here. It's a five-page document, seven-page document that will be updated periodically as we go across the course of the school year. And it talks a little bit about what I just said in more detail. It's laid out, I think, clearly. And what happens is it also then talks about some other issues that we might be curious about, such as contact tracing. Who does it? Where does it come from? Who gets contacted? Could a school be closed if there's an outbreak? The answer is yes. It certainly could be, depending on how widespread it is. However, we almost understand that even though the state has relaxed a lot of its restrictions, they still have in place a color-coded system of identifying the penetration of the virus. And they use green, wide-open, yellow, cautious, orange, you're at a high level, red, you're at an extremely high level. And there are corresponding recommendations that come from the Department of Health, depending on what that is. So, I talk about that up here. I give you all the links to that so that everybody has it. And what will happen is, once the board goes through this tonight, then I will be communicating these documents to everybody in the school, middle school, high school. They'll go home to the parents tomorrow. But I also talk about some mundane things like what kind of schedule that kids are going to follow, which is the regular schedule that they would have followed, eight periods. Middle school has a 10-period day. There's an overlap depending on what grade you're in for lunch. The high school, we made an adjustment. We had one unified lunch. We're going to have two separate lunches during the course of the day so that we reduce the number of students that are in the cafeteria and in the commons, and then we can appropriately sit people. Students will not be permitted, as they have been in the past, to eat all over the building. They have to eat only in cafeteria or the commons where we have it set up. Are we going to have lockers available for students? The answer is yes. The athletics have lockers. The answer is yes. That's all laid out in the frequently asked questions. So, the biggest differences that we see here are, we all have to acknowledge that we're going to be open. Social distancing is not a reality in school. You are permitted to wear a mask. You don't have to wear a mask if you don't, regardless of status. But if you are vaccinated, you have a different set of quarantine protocols than if you are unvaccinated. And I didn't make up those quarantines. I pulled them out of the documents, which are on the website. So, you can look to see that those recommendations came from the Department of Health and the Department of Education. So, board, that concludes what I have to say about that. I don't know if you have any questions before you want to ask the other.
Do I have a question?
Sure.
Peer leadership, or we'll have one at your leadership, but you speak on it more often.
Sure. Well, peer leadership is not a quote-unquote COVID-related thing, but we have a policy plan, which we met with the leaders of peer leadership, excuse me, and we will be incorporating a modified program into this act.
Okay. And then my second question is, if we're going to be doing 200 of that type of students, are we looking to have separated lunches due to grade level or random for each junior, senior, freshman, sophomore?
Well, I could explain it, but I'll probably mess it up. And thankfully, Tiffany Correa, Correa, excuse me, and Brian Pepe, our high school principals here. So, if I could punt over to Brian, if you wouldn't mind coming around, Brian, so that you can be on the camera.
Sure. Sorry, I didn't.
I am too.
Good evening, everybody. Good question. So, lunch, we looked at dividing lunch up by grade levels. Wasn't really doable, so it's just going to be randomized. And we're going to, each teacher is going to be assigned the first lunch or second lunch, and that's how we're going to assign the students lunch. So, students will explain to all those students the first couple of days of school. Those first two days are half-days, so their first full day with lunch is until September 9th. So, those first two days, we'll take advantage of those days and teach the kids about the schedule and lunch for the children's school and essential.
And then can I just speak in one more question? Seniors, will they be able to use the building?
Similar to the previous.
Here. Senior still, senior privileges are not affected by these recommendations. And, you know, depending on what our responses, depending on what the responses of the students and how we operate the first couple of days, we may make further recommendations.
Right. I just know the schedules won't do, and because the schedule's changing and that, will students have lunch at the same time every day, which is possible, it is going to switch.
So, the student most likely will have two first lunches and then two second lunches. I already created a cheat sheet for them. They write it down so that it's all over the schedule.
It's a good schedule. It's not a cheat sheet. You don't cheat, man. You know that.
So, I have two questions, but don't bother. He might need to point one of the questions to you. Should the vaccine change to a fully FDA-approved vaccine? Would we perhaps change our approach to quarantine like we do other vaccines?
Well, if the, so the way you phrase the question, the answer is, of course, that may happen. But I think before I would recommend to board that we require a vaccine, there would have to be an enormous amount of research done as to what's permitted and what isn't. Because generally speaking, schools don't make recommendations or schools don't make decisions about it. Schools can force what's already there, you know, and we collect the information that's already there. measles, mumps, and rubella, polio, you know, those kinds of things. We collect that information that another agency has come forward. However, I think the key point before that discussion even goes forward, whether or not they become fully vaccinated.
Right, right. That we could not have.
Right. Like, I don't think you can talk about it until it's full up.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but last year, because we didn't have lockers for PE, who came dressed for PE and participated, even though the locker room was available, could students, if they are dressed appropriately for PE, could they? Because, because prior to that, you were not permitted to wear your, we'll call it, J clothes for PE. So, are they permitted to wear whatever they wore at school to PE as long as it's PE appropriate?
Has it really been discussed here?
So, that's.
I want everyone to feel comfortable, so if someone will figure some, if it's that day, we'll talk to the teachers and work that out.
So, it's just in here that the lockers are available, somebody's going to say it, but wait. I think, what if I don't?
I'm sure it's going to, there'll be those kinds of situations with the government declaring that we can't be fully vaccinated. Other questions from the board? I just wanted to say, if you look at the frequently asked questions document, you can see that, aside from the title, there's a whole bold paragraph. The bold paragraph says that these recommendations could change at any time because there's outside influences there that go beyond the school. So, the school district closed because we were ordered to close. The school district had procedures for entering school and leaving school because we were required to have those. That could come back. We all need to understand that the situation could change. The governor could have emergency powers again, which would impact schools. The legislature could step in to do that. I don't know about the federal government. Certainly, they have the power, but they haven't stepped in yet. But certainly, our local health agencies could also be part of it. The one confusing thing that parents have to understand is that Riverdale, as a regional school district, is actually served by two different health departments. Oradel participates with the Bergen County Health Department. So, they, the officer is from the Bergen County Health Department. Riverets has its own, and therefore, they participate in their own health department. So, they have an infrastructure themselves. And sometimes, they don't align. And while you see, and this came up a number of times during the course of the last school year, I would get notices from parents that say, "But in this high school, they're doing this, and in this high school, they're doing that." And that's true because in Bergen County, there are actually seven different health jurisdictions that occur. So, you could, my, our neighbor Paramus, I know they're not, but our neighbor Paramus could be a different health jurisdiction than we are. And it's entirely possible that you could get seven different recommendations across the county regarding this kind of simulation that we have. But absent that kind of stuff, we also need to be aware of just whether or not the virus re-penetrates the population, which of course, I hope it does not, regardless of your vaccination status. I hope it does not. I hope it does not interfere with our school operations for the coming school year. And our intent is to be open, as Brian mentioned, for the second and third, with our half-days, which are in calendar, and full day beginning September 9th. Of course, there may be some building-level questions if you have, you're an incoming seventh-grade parent or you've never been in Riverdale before, or you're an incoming ninth-grade parent. There might be some questions that are related to the buildings themselves. Our plan of action is that once this is done and I send it out to the community in my cover letter, it will say, "There will be more information coming forward from each of the buildings that will be much more specific to the buildings themselves so that we try to communicate as quickly and as effectively as possible." Any other questions from the board?
For that, for a middle school, we are going to give the kids an opportunity to get into the middle school and high school, so we'll get the children before we open it, so I'm not going to track.
Oh, yeah, that's already actually underway. Both, both middle school and high school have separate times that they're identified for students to come in. You take a tour. You don't have to, it's not an assigned time. You can just come. And if you're a high school parent, they're posted on the front door, I think, of the high school. I know it's on the way, and so there's days when, you know, if you haven't been in before, you can come in. Florida got a question.
I'll open it up now to public comments, assuming you're here for the reopening plan. Do we have a microphone?
Take your pick. I think it's pretty sophisticated.
If somebody does have something to say, please just step up, state your name and the town in which you live, and you will have three minutes to speak and open to the public. Yeah, just on the opening plan. If you have something else to speak about, I'm just kind of as a courtesy, under the assumption that you were here for the reopening plan, if you have something else, if you can just hang on until the end of the meeting, then we open it up to anything else.
Okay, great.
Fair?
Yep, fair. Hi, hi, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Debbie Barjaki. I have a question. If our children, if there's an exposure and they must quarantine for 10 days, will they, will there be access for online learning?
Yes. That's in the frequently asked.
So, they have to quarantine, they have to stay home, but all the classes are available to them?
Yeah.
Is it considered one absence or 10?
Oh, if they're quarantining, if they're not, they don't have an absence that counts against them. Quarantine is a special situation.
Okay. So, full online learning in every class?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Vince Galcio, Oradel. Superintendent, first I just want to say, I was happy when I read your letter of July 8th talking about the proposal not to require vaccinations. And I'm actually happy with the proposals you had without, you know, requiring masks. What I would say going forward, I understand that this is somewhat of a fluid situation, and as one board member asked, whether or not the FDA will eventually approve the vaccination. I would also urge the board to consider the target population here. We're talking about students from under 18 years old and. And for as much as we've had 600,000 tragic deaths in the United States due to COVID, um, 400 of those, um, were below the age of 18. So we're talking about, uh, 0.006% of the total deaths in, in the population. That's good news for, for our kids. Um, so while we hear things about the Delta variant and uptick, um, of COVID, uh, it seems like this target population, uh, has not been affected in the same way, number one. And then when we look at the vaccine and we look at the, and these are numbers from the CDC. Uh, but when we look at the vaccine and the statistics from the Governor's Own Bears website, we see over 6,000, um, serious adverse consequences, uh, from the vaccine, including blood clots, myocarditis, especially within, within the young population. So, um, what I would urge the board, understanding that things may change, is not to rush to judgment and look at the vaccination and the personal choice of getting the vaccine is one of managed risk. So that, in particular, for the youth population where the, the risk is extremely low for COVID, you look at the potential side effects of the vaccine itself. Um, and you look at, and again, I think that's an individual's choice. So, um, again, happy to hear the proposal as it is, but also, um, not to, uh, rush to judgment if recommendations do come down at a future point in time. And also allow, uh, comments from, from the parents of, of the Riverdale community. Thank you.
Just come over a little bit to the mic picture, a little bit.
Okay.
Just follow the students' direction.
Right there. Right there. No, you're not, but we can hear you.
Okay, but you can hear me. Hi, Nancy Shapiro from Oradel. Uh, just wanted to thank you for this very detailed, uh, opening plan. I think we've all been really anxious to see what's going to happen. Uh, two thumbs up for no mask mandate. I hope we can stay this way, staying positive. I'm delighted to see that the district invested in the needlepoint bipolar ionization. Uh, we did that at Oradel Public School. I put it in my own house. And it gives me as a parent, uh, an extra level of comfort sending my child here, knowing that it catches COVID, flu, and all kinds of other cooties. So that was a great job investing in that. Um, I'm delighted to see students are going to be back at athletic events. I can't tell you, um, it's been a difficult year for everybody. And, um, I had the misfortune of spending some time on a pediatric floor at a, a local hospital this summer. And without getting into details, I spoke with one of the professionals who worked there. And I asked her, how is it, you know, how was it with COVID and the children? And, um, you know, she mentioned, you know, some, like, like you said, some kids came in, you know. But children, the children who were coming, who they were seeing was not so much for COVID. It was actually for psychiatric crisis due to the pandemic. And, uh, it broke my heart, um, because it's been a very difficult year for mental health for all the children. And I do encourage you while following local, state, federal guidelines, to do everything in your power to keep these buildings open. It is so important, you know, even if it's a little bit modified. And I think the lunch period, also an excellent modification. Uh, I have a senior, she will be off and gone, but it will be nice to see children not eating on the floor and spaced out a little bit. Uh, well done. I'm optimistic for September. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. If I could just pick up two points just for help clarify. Uh, in the document, at the end, it talks a little bit about facility enhancements. And what we've done is, uh, we've installed, uh, these ionization units, not only in the individual classroom ventilators, but also in the rooftop units that serve on the building. And what they're designed to do is to remove impurities from the air. Um, you know, as soon as we finished the contract with them, with the people putting it in, I saw an article in the paper, I think it was last Friday, saying that ionization units do nothing. So I just want everybody to know, there's no right step, wrong step that's going on. What we're trying to do is to put in an air purification system in, in each individual classroom that has the capable ventilation and in those classrooms that have, uh, that are served by a, a rooftop unit. So there could be four or five classrooms at one time. The second point is mental health. And while I have her here, I'm going to punt over to Tiffany Correa because Tiffany's been leading, um, some of our efforts in preparing for mental health of students. And thanks for being here. Um, normally administrators don't come, so I appreciate both administrators for showing up out of the blue, uh, to be here. But if you would like to just enhance a little bit, uh, mental health supports that we are putting, please.
Sure. Um, so over the past year that we had for school year, we had about 40 staff members who have been youth mental health trained. Um, so they are getting that sort of training to help with identifying students who are struggling. As well as we are going to have two homeless rooms in the district. One being at the high school, one being at the middle school for students to go in to be depressed. As well as for the 12th graders, we are doing a team mental health per se training for them so they can actually be identifiers for their friends who might be struggling with mental illness or crisis.
We have, we have a whole series of other supports that are available to students. You have the, um, the guidance department, we have our student assistance counselor, we have our association with Care Plus. Um, we also have our, we, we did at the end of last year and we're doing, um, again, beginning right away in the beginning of the year, we have supports for students who may be struggling academically. Uh, particularly in English and mathematics, but in some other areas, uh, we'll have that. And, um, there's, you know, there is an option for students to participate in COVID this summer here and there's at least an electronic piece to, uh, do some skill enhancement if they want to. I don't like to use the term learning loss, I'll just say that right out of the chute because I believe that we've all learned a lot during this past time. And our students have learned a lot about resilience and ability to cope with difficult things. So I think they learned stuff. However, we do recognize that if you were to march along the standards line, there may be some gaps that students have. So we've put into place some ways for students to pick that up during the course of the year.
Joan Kristin, Riveredge. Um, just thinking back to some of the board meetings last year, there was a lot of support for having the schools open as much as possible. There was also, I feel like, an equal, uh, number of parents who are really concerned and genuinely scared about sending their students back to school. Um, so just, just because those people might, might not be here this evening so that we can let them know what your response might be for students, parents that are still concerned. You know, we see people outside, outside still wearing masks. They might be very scared and hesitant to send their children back with really nothing but their child's own mask protecting them. So if you could just maybe speak for those that might have those concerns.
Well, as I mentioned very beginning, if you want to wear a mask, you can. And I think anybody who, who has a fear should take advantage of any protection that may be available, but it's their choice to do so. Um, the, the, uh, last year, we were ordered by the Department of Education to have an online component. This year, the online component is very, very limited. As I mentioned before, the question that came from before is if you're quarantined, are you able to participate in school? The answer is yes. Uh, but if you have a, just a general fear of returning to school, that's probably not going to rise to the level of it. There would have to be a valid identified medical reason for someone not to return to school. Well, because that's what we're really offering as the baseline is that. So I would just encourage that any parent who's hesitant about that is to reach out to school. Reach out to us, let us try to help mitigate whatever concerns that might exist.
Anybody else? What's, uh, behind you?
Yeah, Joseph Seeland, Oradel. I'm happy to hear the opening guidelines, I think, uh... Joseph Seeland from Oradel, I'm actually very glad and happy to hear about, uh, opening protocol and guidelines. I think it benefits our students, the parents, as well as the, uh, teachers. Uh, happy that, uh, there's no vaccine mandate as well as mask mandate. I guess a question and for me to learn, if the state guidelines, Bergen County Health Department guidelines stayed the same as what you proposed in the protocols, what would it take for schools to change those protocols? And if you do decide to change the guidelines, how does the decision made? Are two guys making a phone call at 10:00 AM, um, 10:00 PM and waking up in the morning, sending an email, saying that we changed those guidelines? Or is actually this board makes a decision, gets a feedback from the parents, and then implement those changes if necessary?
Well, it's, actually, it's a great question, you know, because it's also, well, we're talking about a very serious subject here with, uh, COVID and whatnot, but it's also like, how do you close school? When you have, you have a weather, you know, who makes those decisions? So for these, for decisions to change overnight, all right, and I'm using that term on purpose, there would have to be an order from the group that we're responsible to. The governor's office, the Department of Ed, Department of Health. It would have to say, tomorrow, all schools are closed. Tomorrow, all, um, you have to wear a mask. Those, that would have to happen. If there were going to be local decision change, if we were going to change from this recommendation that you have before you now, absent what I just described, it would have to come back here for a conversation.
And it'll be open to the public?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay. And you guys will listen to parents' recommendations or their, uh, their thoughts?
Well, I think, but the fair way to say that is, yes, they absolutely listen. I listen. I, you know, if you call me, contact me, and believe me, I had a whole bunch of that stuff last year, I reply to everybody. Maybe it takes a little while to get back to everybody, but even if you're angry with me, you will get a call back or an email back. But yeah, we listen and we try to take in all the decisions, all the information that we have to make a decision. So I'm not promising you that you'll be happy with everything that we do, but you'll certainly be heard.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just had a, a follow-up question on what you said about being responsible to, uh, the Department of Health and I believe you also said.
Department of Education.
Department of Education. Is that some, some sort of formal responsibility from the state to the local school boards? Or is that informal? Or do they, do they have a, can they mandate that, that you close? Or is it just a recommendation that comes?
No, they can mandate.
Okay.
Thank you. So the, the, there are four divisions that can do it. It's the governor's office, the legislature, the department, the New Jersey Department of Education, and the New Jersey Department of Health. Now, with the Department of Health, you know, they pass, everybody passes that information down. But those are the four entities that would have to do it. The authority that I have as a superintendent is if, and I'm just using this as an example, if 40% of our students came down with whooping cough, I'm changing the subject on purpose. If 40% of our students came down with whooping cough, I would have the authority to close the school for a period of time till that went away. But that would have to be an extremely rare local condition for something like that to happen. Otherwise, it's coming from those four entities.
Did you have something else?
Yeah.
Please state your name again, just sort of picks up for the people at home.
Sure, Joan Kristin, Riveredge. Um, so a question and then a quick comment. Um, I'm just trying to envision if students did have to quarantine. You know, you stated that there would be synchronous instruction, or would that be asynchronous?
Well, first of, our intention is to issue online instruction to students so they will be able to participate in their regular classes. But it would be different than the instruction that we had in this, this past year because the vast majority of students would be in the room as opposed to being at home, which is completely different, that kind of situation. Could there be some asynchronous? Sure, there could be. Cause that or some other subject areas that might have it. It could be assignment provided, et cetera. But the intention is to have students be able to participate in a classroom.
So if they were in quarantine and they were home, they would probably just be listening to the lesson taking place. The teacher wouldn't necessarily be interacting with that one student, perhaps as in quarantine.
I, I, no, I wouldn't say they'd have the ability to interact. I just don't think it would be as fluid as they were before because the mic goes two ways, camera goes two ways.
Um, the comment is, um, I appreciate the fact that, you know, the board and you are open to, you know, parents' opinions and feelings and comments. And, you know, I think I stated at the last meeting, or the last meeting that I was at anyway, um, I think taking away the Teams platform or some other interactive platform for the meetings takes away, um, some of those opinions and questions that you would be hearing. Um, you know, people that might be watching at home or click on it tomorrow are not able to interact with you and the board in the moment.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. There will be public comments at the end of the meeting. For any other visits related to, uh, Riverdale. Uh, we're going to jump into, uh, the reports. And my report tonight is just, I'm going to go over a couple of things. I have printed out some emails, I know, all of them are questions, uh, about the incoming students visiting the school building. And they were some emails, uh, the middle school email went out on the 7th of July. And, um, they're conducting optional, optional visits to the middle school via the tour, the building, and check locker locations and meet administration and fellow future walks. Uh, they're splitting the student body by alphabet. So it's, uh, A to L will have visitations Wednesday, August 11th through the 18th. And M to Z will have Thursday, August 12th through the 19th, uh, more than 19th. Uh, and the high school has the same type of, uh, situation going on for incoming freshmen. Uh, they did have two, uh, two dates that had passed already, but July 28th, August 4th, uh, August 11th, 18th through 25th. Uh, the opportunities above will be self-guided tours with no reservation needed. Uh, but as you walk through the building, be sure to check out the QR codes outside each classroom, which is kind of cool. Uh, they will take you directly to a video created by each staff member introducing themselves. Uh, and then they have scavenger hunts associated with that as well. There will be a website specifically for incoming students to the high school. And the orientation, the freshman orientation will take place the first week of school. Then there was, uh, another email on the 15th, uh, for athletics. Um, student athletes must get a physical from their private physician. This is an annual state requirement for participation in inter-scholastic athletics. No athlete, they practice or otherwise participate in athletics without parent permission and physical clearance from their doctor.
Like that, this, that's not COVID-related, that's a normal, every year, every day. They're not getting protected.
And this was geared more towards 7th graders because I, I believe the other grades should already, uh, know what's going on as far as principles and.
I'm sorry, uh, Pat, do we still offer a couple more questions?
Yes.
Or can you deal with our physicians?
Yes. Yes, Dr. Bar.
And then the, another email that was, uh, July 8th was a jam-packed email day apparently. Um, this one is, Riverdale recognizes that the 2021 school year was most unusual. We recognize that many students may feel the need to reinforce skills in order to start the new school year with confidence. As a result, Riverdale's providing summer support resources in English and mathematics. As a result, Riverdale's providing summer support resources in English and mathematics. These resources may be assessed at any time and are optional. We encourage you to have your child review the materials as they are intended to help students maintain and strengthen their skills, knowledge over the summer. They have links for ELA and MAT. There are also links here for students preparing for the SAT. These links can also be found on the district and school websites. So this is all optional, nothing is mandatory. If you refer to that July 8th email as well. That's all I have for tonight. So Patrick, if you have anything further?
I have nothing else to add at this point.
Okay. I do not believe we had any committee meetings since our last board meeting. If anyone has anything, I won't even go through it.
The budget finance is not happening. I don't know if Trudy wanted to talk about it before that email went out, but the LS.
Sure. I said, you mean at the point of sales, we're looking to point to sales for the cafeteria and books in the middle school and high school. So what happened is you still have the option, students still have the option to come and pay cash when they get there, but they also have the option, the parent can put money on account and then the student can come in and take their ID and swipe it. And then they can both get their food. And then the parents, when they're home, can look to see what items were purchased by the students. So we're hoping to have it up and running for September.
Very good. Okay, let's move into consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
I'll say it. Do we have any questions or concerns or issues with the consent agenda at all?
So 10A, the tier 10?
Yes.
What, do you have any idea, I'm sorry to interrupt, do you have any idea of like what their protocol will be? For the, for participation?
At, when they're at the camp, I don't have that list. I, I don't have it fully. I know that there was something part of a discussion that came my way regarding what, how they're going to be housed, how far apart, you know, who's their cohort, et cetera. I just don't have that. Make careful.
But it'll be fully careful if anybody who's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then the other, you know, I've spoken about this before, that it's great that we are, you know, continually enhancing our support services for our students, but the $102,000 to Care Plus for a five-day person, I think we would have a lot more flexibility if we look to consider. I know it's not apple to apple because there's benefits that come with, you know, when we have, we have somebody on their tenure, there's other things. But I really do think we need to consider whether we want to add a staff person instead of outsourcing, given that I had done the analysis and the amount of school clearances is very minimal. And so if it was a really large number, there's a real benefit to having that. But it is a very minimal number and it's not, and they're not required to use Care Plus. You can make a school clearance from, from anyone. You don't dictate who you get that clearance from. And so I just want us going forward next year to, when we're doing the budget, to really make a strong consideration for a different staff person that we also would have more flexibility in how we might be able to utilize them. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. Okay, under nine, personnel, special request number two. We have resolved that the governing body hereby appoints Trudy Engel as the qualified purchasing agent to exercise the duties of a purchasing agent pursuant to NJSA with specific relevance to the authority, responsibility, and accountability of the purchasing activity of the BOE. And be it further acknowledged that the bid threshold of $44,000 and 15% of that, $6,600, without soliciting competitive proposals.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Anybody have any questions about this?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
I would just say one more responsibility to thank you. Yes?
Yes. And Alan?
Yes.
Under 12, Finance and District Operations. I, the superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending June 30th, 2021. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Glad you.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie? Yes. Alan?
Yes. Also, under 12, Finance and District Operations. W, it's recommended by the superintendent that all items from the executive agenda dated July 26th, 2021 be approved. Do I have a motion, please?
I have a motion.
I'll say it.
And I'll just go over some of these briefly that have been throughout college. We have some staff members working additional schedules due to certain people being out. Work schedule change and salary adjustment. Salary adjustment, an extension of an unpaid New Jersey state family leave of absence. A waiver for an administrator.
Alan, just, it's sort of listed on the, on the A.
On the, I'm sorry?
For the public, it's also listed at 1A for the, some of the items that we discussed.
Okay.
Just for, for the public, just to know. Alan, we're trying to give him more information, but it's all part of it right there.
Well, then I will also do the rest.
He's just saying he's.
Very good. Okay, so Trudy, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie? Yes. Alan?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to all business news business. Anybody? I'll now open up the public comments. If there are any public comments and anything else, put them to the microphone. Both of you do a journey. One favor?
All right.